Board of Selectmen for Monday, November 16th to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is that all on? On? Jamie? Does it look on?
Yes, it looks on. Yep. And you, we're expecting him to call about now?
We're expecting him to call, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna start with, we're gonna keep?
That's, yeah, that's the first thing on the agenda.
Okay.
We could always, if he wants to wait for a short bit, we could always add David to the agenda now and follow up with the presentation from Blum?
Sure.
Okay, great. Why don't we do that? I'm sure David would appreciate that. So first, I would like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add a presentation from our local health director, David Knopf, to discuss in-town COVID-19 testing. David moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Great. Krista, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much, David. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, as you know, we've, as a community, have enjoyed the COVID testing that was offered by Murphy Medical for several months. And it became apparent that we were going to need to make some adjustments in that type of service, the testing service. So we did some due diligence and interviewed a couple of providers that would enable the town to retain the ability to offer citizens easy access to testing.
See if I can, I'm gonna have to try and put him on hold.
Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening. This is Jamie Stevenson.
Hi, I'm having a long Darien IT meeting. It's Lindsey from Blum Shapiro.
Hi, Lindsey. You're in the right place. This is Jamie Stevenson, Darien's first selectman. I'm going to have to put you on hold briefly. We're in the middle of a short presentation and I will come right back to you, if that's okay.
Sure. I'm gonna actually tell my colleague if she had a little bit of trouble calling in. So I'll do that anytime.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna put you on hold.
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, sorry about that.
To expedite the process, we interviewed two different companies. One was, the first one was Physician One. And the testing that they were going to offer would have necessitated indoor offering for testing where people would park their car, get out of the car, go inside. And the only place that we could see to do that would have been the Mather Center. That didn't seem to work well because we have traffic and parking problems here as it is. And they wanted to do substantial numbers of tests when they were here, in the hundreds. And we don't have the capability of supporting that kind of traffic flow here. We also met with and discussed with EverPoint Health. And they offered a proposal that included utilizing a similar drive-through clinic, only they will provide trailer that would be located in Leroy West parking lot. And also offer expanded hours, including weekends. The primary difference between this operation and the previous one is this is an out-of-network offer where people who want to get tested will be paying directly for that service. There's no insurance billing being offered in this, by this company. But it's a completely self-contained process where they're gonna have their own, as I said, trailer where they'll be processing people as they drive by, so people don't have to get out of the car. And as I said, they'll be offering that service pretty much any hours that we would want them to be there, as I said, including on Saturdays.
This is Jamie Stevenson.
If at all possible. We felt that was a very strong.
I'm good, Jeff. I'm gonna have to put you on hold. We're just in the middle of another presentation.
As I said, it's a out-of-network offering. They're going to work on, and they are working on, coming up with an offer that would provide for lab testing through covered laboratories to be credited towards the fee, so they can back bill. So people, if their lab work, that they submit the work to be tested, people can get reimbursed from their insurance companies for the cost of testing. But they're gonna have to pay in advance. This, it's by appointment, payment in advance system where people can't just show up. It's not a walk-up clinic at all. It's by appointment. They have, the website clearly defines services offered and the fees that are associated with it. There will be no up charges, no hidden charges, no fees. What you pay. And they will also provide necessary consults in the event of positive cases. But there's, the fee is fully explained, full disclosure on the website as to what it is you get when you sign up and you will get an appointment. And it should be really a good operation, I think, for the town. And Jamie and I met with the proprietor of that company and, sorry, that detailed proposal isn't available as yet, but it's pretty close to it. And it's pretty significant.
We're looking forward to the expanded hours?
Yes.
Weekend hours? And we are also looking forward to the fact that this particular vendor is aggressively pursuing distribution of vaccines when they become available. So we're hoping that we will smoothly transition from testing to vaccinations when they become available. So I think that'll be wonderful for the town. Krista?
Thank you, David. Could you elaborate? I've got a little confused. You mentioned there's a trailer. They'll be utilizing the Leroy West parking lot, but then it's gonna be drive-through.
Yes.
They don't get out of the car?
No, people don't get out of the car. People will get out of the trailer and go out and swab people that are staying in your car. So like now, we have a tent.
Correct.
And they come out of the tent to swab people that are driving by. So it'll be the same. Only thing is, with winter coming, I'm not so sure how readily usable the tent would be in the cold weather, but the trailer will be. And people will be just going in and out.
Okay, so the important point is that the residents of Darien will still stay in their car as they had before.
Exactly.
So it's the people administering now have a trailer as opposed to a tent?
Yes. And the other advantage to having a tent is that the reagents are kept at a constant temperature.
The trailer, I mean, the trailer.
The trailer, yes, thank you. The trailer, so it's better for the equipment, better for the testing process. So everything stays at a constant climate during the course of the day, which may not happen in a tent.
David, is there a turnaround in terms of providing a reading of the test?
Yes. So the document that he submitted to us said one to two days after the lab receives it. So what we've asked him to do would be to provide us with a more definitive statement that says, from the time you get tested, when will you get your result? That's pending. That will be in the final document that you will receive.
And so he's using independent labs?
Yes.
Whereas Murphy was using his own lab, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the difference.
That's one difference. And it would be a little bit longer technically of a turnaround because Murphy was able to get positive results back within 24 hours. And he was contacting people directly as well as informing us when those positive tests were. So that's one disadvantage here, if you wanna call it that, is that there's a little bit more time between.
And he's using, I gather, rope people labs?
Yes.
Well-established ones?
And the town of Darien will also receive, David will receive reports from this provider about the numbers of tests that are done and the results of those tests.
Yes.
Sarah?
Just to confirm, they're PCR tests, yes?
Both.
Oh, interesting.
So the way, yes, he's gonna offer the rapid antigen test as well as the PCR test.
Okay.
But one of the things that we stress with the doctor is that the only time you're gonna do the antigen test is if a person comes in with symptoms. So if you think you may be sick, you know, you wake up in the morning with a sore throat, headache, or whatever, and you wanna get tested to find out if you have COVID, then you can go there and get the antigen test. And it was always recommended that you get the PCR test as well. But what happens with the antigen test is that it tends to have a somewhat unacceptable rate of false positives in asymptomatic people.
Interesting.
So it's really recommended that the antigen, quick antigen test, only be done when people who have some form of symptoms. So you can know right away if you need to quarantine yourself or isolate yourself from, you know, work, school, or whatever.
Right.
So that would be a good tool. And that is not being offered now, but it will be offered at this new clinic.
That's great. So people will need to, they'll book an appointment, similar to how we've done it in the past on the website?
Yes.
And then pay for that in advance?
Yes.
So that no one can show up just to kinda go and get a test, kind of hoping to wait in line to get a test? They'll have to book everything in advance?
They have to book in advance. And, you know, I think the intent is to try to accommodate people as best as possible. And if there's the ability, if there's not a line, and there shouldn't be lines.
Right.
Because it's by appointment.
Right.
Shouldn't be anybody there. So if there's the ability to take a person who can fill out the application and pay there and there's time to process.
While they're waiting.
That would be able to be done. But we would like to try not to encourage that. You know, do it in advance.
Yes, I've just been hearing about the lines at certain testing sites today. And I worry that we would have, you know, 100 cars waiting to hopefully get a test today.
Right.
If we tell them they need to book in advance, it might be better. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So when you mention appointment, do they need just an appointment for EverPoint, but not, you do not need a prescription from a doctor?
No.
Correct.
Because there's the pre-screening process that this is involving and don't get. Because it's not being submitted to insurance, you don't need that positive, you know, symptomatic request to do it or prescription from a doctor to do it. But this is a doctor-administered test program. So there's a screening process that goes in. But no, you do not have to be, you don't need a prescription for testing.
You don't need, right. Okay. Could you just talk a little bit more then about the process? They pay, how much are they gonna? We don't know what he's asking, or is that still being negotiated?
The final price is being negotiated. Right now, it's $200 a test.
For either of those tests?
Yes. And there's a package of, I think they said, three and a quarter if you're going to do both. So it's not 200 plus 200 if you're doing both. It's a little less.
Okay. And just so everyone's clear, then you pay in advance? And is there the option to submit it to insurance afterwards? Could you elaborate on that again? I'm sorry.
He's working on a process that would identify labs that are in network that would coincide, say, particularly with our town employees, so that they can submit an insurance claim and get reimbursed. So they'd have to pay. Because he's not gonna do any of the insurance work. He, at EverPoint, will not be doing any of the insurance work. Will not be submitting claims. That would be up to, they get a receipt and it would be up to the, you know, policyholder to submit a request for reimbursement.
Remembering, though, that the insurance companies are no longer covering the cost of tests if you are asymptomatic.
Right.
So if you, if you go there and you get tested and you find out that you're positive, you then certainly can submit your, the cost of your test. And it should be covered by your insurance because you have COVID. But if you don't have COVID, the cost of that test will not be reimbursed by your insurance agency.
Will his website, or when the individual arrives for the testing, indicate what labs he's using? So you can confirm whether or not your lab is in your network?
Yes. That will be done. When that's, when he goes through the different labs that are actually doing the testing, because he's gonna try to expand the labs that he works with for testing to enable the best bang for our buck as a community.
Okay, I mean, as long as it's transparent and people can choose whether or not that insurance, if that lab is not in-network or not. But as long as that information would be available, that's important.
Yeah, we've stressed the importance of transparency.
And then what about his facility fee? You're mentioning lab work. We're talking about lab work. But I'm assuming part of that cost is also just for his?
The administration.
The administration of the test?
Yes.
So it would not be necessarily 100% covered?
No.
Okay. Is this going to be only for Darien residents, or?
Well, we hadn't thought to restrict it.
Okay.
It was a matter of, we didn't do it with the other one. We didn't restrict it.
Okay.
But certainly, at least 60 to 70% of people who avail themselves of the service before were residents.
That's interesting, okay.
So it was primarily Darien residents. And we track that by zip code.
Yep. Would there be any consideration if we find people in town or having to wait a while that we would modify that?
I'd have to really think about that.
Only if it presents as an issue.
Yeah. Testing is, everybody needs testing and.
Oh, no.
Yeah, if it turns, if, I'm certain that if it turns out that we're gonna end up in a backlog of, that you can't get tested for two weeks.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, the lines Sarah mentioned, you know, the, I'd hate to see the town offering a service to its residents and finding out our residents can't get in because we're opening it to Fairfield County, Westchester County.
Right. I think the big difference between the circumstance that you're describing was that it was sort of a one-off deal. It was a one-day thing.
Oh, okay.
This is going to be every day.
Okay, fair enough.
And it, you know, it can be every day. If we wanted it to be seven days a week, he made it clear that he could have staff here seven days a week, which I don't think that's really necessary.
Okay, that we shouldn't have initiative.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
I would also say that this provider, while we have the good fortune of being able to have this provider in the town of Darien, is not the only provider. And our town residents should know that. There are a number of other testing providers, Community Health Centers, the Tully Center, and a number of other, you know, docs, urgent care. So this is just one of many testing providers that we'll be lucky enough to have here.
Yes.
David, it sounds like there's still some details that have to be ironed out with this. Do you have an expectation for, might it be available to implement?
Wednesday.
Yep. We want a seamless transition from one provider to the next. So we fully anticipate, and it's literally just getting that document that David has in a PDF form, getting the provider's certificate of insurance here in Town Hall. And, you know, buttoning up those admin details. But he's ready to go on Wednesday. He'll be here on Wednesday.
The, Murphy Medical had, I think he, I think the email they sent today was 200 or so appointments that they had scheduled there. I went by there today. They did 85 people by four o'clock today. And what they're doing is they're notifying their clients that their, this, their facility here, and they're basically canceling their appointments. And people have the right to reschedule with Murphy somewhere else if they want to. Otherwise, they can come here. But they're all being notified. And yes, we, they are going to be here Wednesday morning with a trailer.
And then, David, what is the plan to get this word out to the community and what were your thoughts on it?
Part of it's right here, right now.
Okay.
You know, we'll do as much as we can with a press release that we're working on in conjunction with EverPoint. They have quite a demand for services on their website now. So this is gonna be expanded on their website with this kind of, you know, neon flashing light that says new location. And we'll do our part to get the word out as best we can through our local media.
It'll be on our website, a link to how you can sign up.
Are they, are they working with any other municipalities? I know they're working with my daughter's school, but are they working with any other municipalities?
I'm not aware of that.
Oh, so maybe the person as well?
Yeah, he didn't mention anything that I recall.
No, corporations and schools primarily.
Right, right.
Okay, any other questions for David? I don't know. So back in July, on July 6th, we approved a motion that stated the Board of Selectmen of the town of Darien, acting as the parking authority, hereby grants permission to the town of Darien to locate a drive-through COVID testing site in the rear section of the Leroy West parking lot until such time as the parking lot is needed for commuters. So I think this resolution still stands as long as everybody's sense of the meaning is that we want to continue to offer this service in the Leroy West parking lot. We don't have to take another vote, so, you know, just looking for.
Yeah, I agree.
Heads to non and agreeing.
Yeah, we were looking at the site, met there today with your representatives of EverPoint. And they liked, they thought the location would work well for them. As I said, their operation is totally self-contained, so we don't need to keep the port-alet there any longer. So we can send that back home. And they're, they're gonna, it's gonna be a two-phase trailer. They're gonna use temporary, temporarily they're gonna use an airstream until they get the actual trailer that they're gonna use, which is more of a, like a construction-type trailer that they'll put on the site.
Do they need power and water hookup?
Um, we're, we're looking into whether or not there's access to electrical. Otherwise, they'll have a generator.
Yeah. I'll just ask, when the final price is decided upon, that in your professional opinion, it is of the price that is appropriate for testing?
I'm not sure what that is, you know, and it's, there's a scale to it. And I know there's a lot of difference and it depends on how much is insurance. But according to the EverPoint people, this is, he's going to make it as conservative as possible to benefit the community. And I think that some of the prices, if they're government-subsidized, you know, can get down as low as $150. But I don't, from what I've seen, $200 isn't out of range.
Okay, no, this is your business. I am not in medical field. So if you feel it's inappropriate that you have done your due diligence and the price he's charging our residents is within reason, that's all I ask.
Yeah, and it does come with extra services, as I said. You know, they're doing a lot of the logistics with the planning, scheduling. Some of the other companies that operate testing want the town to do the scheduling. They want, you know, other people to do that kind of work, the heavy lifting in that regard. But he's, they're managing the whole thing.
I think it is within reason. Tests, test range and price. Physician One charges $90. Doc's Urgent Care charges about $125. One local hospital charges $1,000. So it's a little bit of the Wild West. So I think that $200 is certainly within the range of reasonableness for the service that's being provided from what, the research that I've done.
I agree.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything else for David?
Thank you.
Great, then we'll forge ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David. Okay, this is Jamie Stevenson. Thank you so very much for holding. Who do we have on the line? Hello?
Yeah, I have Deanne Tierney and Jeff Ziploc from Blum Shapiro.
Terrific, thank you.
I just wanna make sure it's Jeff as well.
Okay, hold on one sec, let's see. Kate, I'm not sure how to get this other person here. Maybe you can.
Who else?
Person? Jeff? Jeff.
And who is the one?
There's someone holding here. I just don't know how to. Sorry, did you catch her name? Join them.
No.
Lindsey Tierney and Jeff Ziploc.
Lindsey.
Lindsey? And Jeff?
Lindsey, and you just put it on Jeff.
And he's.
Okay. So. Okay, Jeff, can you hear? Uh-oh.
I can't hear you.
Okay, I might have just lost Lindsey there.
I can hear.
Okay, maybe I missed it.
Oh, good, good job.
Oh, wow.
See, all that phone training paid off.
Terrific. And we wanna thank you very much for holding. We just had one piece of business to take care of. But welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. We are here with my colleagues. I'm Jamie Stevenson. We have Sarah Newman, Krista McNamara, Kip Coons, and David Martin. And the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. I, to be quite frank, I wish we were in presence and we could see everyone's smiling face today. But unfortunately, we're learning a new way to conduct business, so thank you for the opportunity. What we'd like to do, in one minute, I'm gonna just turn it over to Lindsey. I know that our technology assessment report was provided to this group. And what we'd like to do is spend the next 15 minutes or so, and if you need to cut us short, just let us know, walking through the executive summary portion of the report. And certainly at the end of, you know, our overview of the executive summary, we can certainly take on any questions that you might have. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. And everybody here okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
Awesome. Lindsey, you wanna take over?
I hope so.
Sure. And just so I'm clear, Jamie, does everyone have the executive summary in front of them in case I reference page numbers or?
Yes, we do.
Perfect, okay. So I'm gonna just, for a time sake, jump down to our findings and recommendations, which start on page seven. And the way that we organize these is in order of, start on page seven, and, and the way that we organize these is in order of, you know, critical, high to medium and low throughout the report. I will mention, just for clarity, within the critical section and within the mediums and the lows, once they're ranked, we did not prioritize them again within each subsection, so just because the, you know, the first critical is there, doesn't mean that that's the highest of the critical findings, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So, I will say, and I'm on page seven now, that this was probably the heart and soul or, or the meat of our findings in this project, was the IT support agreement that exists currently between the school district and the town. The agreement that you have in place right now is real short, you know, we're looking at three pages, and there's a number of areas that we would typically find in an IT support agreement, that they're just not there, so things like response times for how long we can expect issues to be resolved, or tickets to be responded to, how to submit tickets, and, and what do we do if we have an emergency request and we need IT support immediately, system prioritization and emergency response planning, the ranking of software, the ranking of departments, so if we have an emergency in public safety, and we're having students doing online learning, or online testing, and we have errors there, which problem takes priority, and, and what does the timeline look like to get resolution? And lastly, IT spending and budget planning and what that looks like. The other piece here was the technical engineer who is a hundred percent delegated or devoted to doing IT support for the town, we don't have a job description for that role currently. So our recommendations here is, is, you know, to go ahead and enhance that IT support agreement, and, and spend a significant amount of time here, you know, explicitly stating what this IT relationship is gonna look like, what are our standard service level agreements, what are the expectations, and, and make changes as needed, you know, having an annual review or a look at the document. And lastly, getting that job description in place for the technical engineer. So moving on to our second finding in this area, is, is about public safety IT, so the way that the IT agreement stands now, the, the town resource is also responsible for all things related to public safety IT. And with public safety being unique, that it's, you know, a twenty-four-seven operation, this is a critical area, and, and any downtime is really not acceptable and, and can be devastating, so, you know, public safety is getting more technical, I gave you some numbers in here about body cameras, and the MDTs or the mobile data terminals that exist in cruisers, and, you know, there's a lot of equipment here, so we're using a sworn officer right now to do a lot of IT in places that the existing town resource or dedicated town resource cannot. As far as all applications go, that's all being supported by the sworn officer. And then lastly, item E in this finding is about outdated servers and systems, there's a number of those in place right now, and this is gonna be a fairly big, you know, undertaking and a significant time needed to do upgrades and so forth, so it's important that we have a person on, on deck to do this. The recommendation would be, you know, consider additional support or dedicated support for IT in the public safety area. You know, we have a risk right now, if this officer, you know, leaves or retires, we don't have an immediate backup, especially as, as far as the public safety software and the applications go. Options could be hiring an additional full-time IT resource that's specific for public safety, or considering, you know, outsourcing to a, a third party, or having somebody or a consultant on deck for off-hours and so forth. And we just put in here, you know, that funding can be accomplished in a number of different ways, or split between departments and so forth. Finding three is in regards to mobile devices, we found that there's not a, a mobile device management plan or policy in place right now. We do have smartphones in use without, within the town, we have some employees that are using, you know, mobile phones with town content and town emails on them, and we don't have a software in place that can wipe these devices should they be lost or stolen and so forth, so certainly there's a data risk in place here. And we would tell you, from a recommendation standpoint, all the iss, the devices should be issued, tracked, monitored, and managed through the IT department centrally, we need to have some policies in place about what types of things we can have on the phones, what types of things are, you know, sensitive, and how they're gonna be protected, and what do you do if your phone is missing and so forth. And lastly, putting some security around them with, you know, PIN codes and different types of authentication to make sure that devices are secure. Finding number four speaks to security risks and concerns, these are sort of general security concerns, there was no overarching security program or plan in place, so we, this would for the most part speak to, you know, staff awareness and staff training as far as security goes. When I talked to the IT director, we talked about maybe doing some phishing simulations for staff, so that there would be some cybersecurity awareness, what to look for in emails that might be malicious, how to protect yourself from, you know, misleading links and whatnot on the web, and just sort of beefing up the security features and controls in place for the existing applications, things like multi-factor authentication, advanced threat protection, that we'll do some extra scanning on our email, and sort of other little measures that you can take to just beef up the existing security.
And let me just add, Lindsay, that this is an important area, because there are many organizations, and I'm sure we've heard about this quite a bit, that have been bombarded with, you know, phishing emails, but more importantly, ransomware, and ransomware has changed significantly over the past year, and it's almost a double-edged extortion, where not only are they encrypting, but they're also removing critical data, and if you don't pay the ransom, they put that data on the deep dark web, and so it's, it's the wild, wild west out there as it relates to cybersecurity, and in particular, ransomware. Sorry to interrupt.
Oops, perfect. Number five, so I am on the top of page ten, if anyone's following along on the executive summary, this one is about the PCI or payment card industry, so in interviewing the different town departments, right now, it's sort of, any department that wants to take credit cards is going about it sort of solo, and figuring out what processor works best for them, and what works with the applications they use, and, and implementing, so right now, or at the time of the report, we had eight payment processors in place. And, you know, we don't have a, an overarching policy that, that says, these are the single ones that we use, these are how you're gonna take credit cards, these are the controls and security measures in place around credit cards, and, you know, we're only gonna work with certain ones that integrate with Munis, which is the financial system, and so forth, so in working with the town and, and speaking to them over the past few months and, and following up on the report, there are measures in place, I believe, that are taking steps to streamline the number of payment processors that you have in place right now, and then looking at the fees associated with them to the town and so forth, so I believe that this is already sort of being addressed. Finding number six sort of speaks in the long term, we're talking about strategic plan and IT governance, right now, we don't have that long-term strategy, where we're looking ahead three to five years, and planning for what do we need from a software perspective, what types of applications need to be upgraded, how are we doing from a hardware perspective, and infrastructure and so forth, the departments are kind of just doing their own thing, and there's a lack of technical integration between them, and a, a, a lack of general direction for the town as a whole, when it comes to technology. Our recommendation here would be to create a steering committee, a governance group that can, you know, be used to develop, promote, and pursue the completion of that three-to-five-year plan. This would include the IT director, but it should also include representatives from finance and other departments, you know, you, you don't wanna have somebody in there from public safety, and other, you know, heavy hitters or, or strong IT users throughout the town. We recommend that the IT group would meet, you know, with each department during the budget season, to make sure that appropriate, you know, determination of needs have been set, and that we can anticipate appropriate spending for each department. And the committee should establish a process for reviewing, approving, tracking, and then, you know, monitoring and seeing through to completion all of the IT initiative. Item number seven was a medium risk, and it speaks to training, when we interviewed staff, a, a good majority of them said, you know, that they wanted more training. I will say that based on what we learned in the project, training has certainly been offered to staff in the past, but it may have been too advanced for some, and I think the other component is that it was probably not mandatory or enforced or required, so I think there's others that just didn't attend. Our recommendation would be to implement a regular ongoing training program, you know, with, with workshops for staff, and, and point them to tools that they can use online for self-learning, you know, we have IT training in here being no less than annually, especially for the security training that we had spoke to earlier, and also some training on the webpage, there was a lot of confusion by different departments here, and how to use the webpage, and how to format it, and, and make sure that everything looks similar to the other departments online. The next finding, top of page twelve, is about remote access, this is, this sort of had to be resolved quickly, as this project started, we, you know, we didn't have a remote access plan or program in place, I believe this has already been taken care of since this starts COVID. Finding number nine is about the IT replacement schedule, based on different interviews that we spoke to, people had different feelings about how new or old their equipment was. We did not obtain a formal documented IT equipment replacement schedule, we did go around and look at different PCs and machines, and we saw that some of them were on Windows seven, and some were on ten, and we had different versions of software applications running, so for compatibility purposes, and, and just for training and for clarity across all the departments, we'd like to see those, you know, as closely aligned as possible, and, and standard sort of across town, and we'd like to see a documented plan that says, what's the life cycle of our equipment, what is the schedule for replacement, and make sure that's, you know, sort of equitable across the town. Finding ten, we're, speaks to, you know, a remote workforce program, this is a best practice recommendation that, that we've been discussing with a lot of clients lately, about having some formality about how we're gonna have remote workforce programs and, and staff, you know, how are we gonna handle the transitioning of employees from in the office to at home, and what are the expectations that go with that, and documenting what we think is appropriate, so that's just the recommendation there, is to put some formality to it, have a comprehensive program, include views about, you know, who's remote and what are the circumstances, how will they access the network, which devices are they gonna be using, personal PCs at home or work laptops, tools and applications that they'll use for meetings and communications, and expectations there, and what types of services can Darian offer online or in that virtual town hall format? Finding eleven on the top of page fourteen speaks to mobile phones and, and just, you know, or, actually, this is, sorry, not mobile phones, these are, these are desk phones or landlines, some employees had issues with the phone system, this is probably an easy one to fix, so it's just gonna be training for a couple of specific employees, so that they know how to transfer calls and answer voicemails and so forth. Finding twelve was about Munis, the financial system, and, and just to get the most bang for your buck here, we'd wanna see some mandatory training in Munis to make sure that, you know, we're really fully utilizing and maximizing all the capabilities that it has to offer.
Hey Lindsay, I'm gonna stop you right now, because we're getting into some of the low-risk items, and, and.
Yes.
And I'm just looking at the timeframe, so I guess I'd like to call a, a timeout in our formal presentation and see, and if anyone had any questions on the, the meat, if you will, of, of the report.
Thank you very much, I will open up to board questions.
Krista.
Krista.
Yes, thank you, this is Krista McNamara, could you elaborate, this is sort of an overarching question, in, you refer to quote "best business practices," could you talk a little bit about how you determine best business practices, where, is it a cohort, did you look at other municipalities in Fairfield County, how did you arrive at that term, and how it applied to the workings of Darian?
I would say it's a combination, combination of working with other municipalities and school districts, as well as private industry as well, you know, there are certain obligations and requirements of, and services that, you know, the municipal, municipality needs to provide, and, and I think what we try to do in this report is help to identify some of those common areas that we can enhance and improve service, both to residents as well as internally within the organization as a whole.
But then, are the recommendations you're making, would, are they, because I could see a corporation may look at this process differently than a municipality, so did you tailor your recommendations to the?
Yeah, no, it was, it, it was more from a municipality perspective, we, you know, both Lindsay and I spend probably about eighty percent of our time working with municipalities and, and school districts throughout Connecticut and Massachusetts, and so the, the recommendations that you see here are more aligned towards what municipalities should and, and could be looking for from a best practice perspective.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sarah?
The only other question I had was regarding best practices, would there be different software programs that someone might suggest that we would use to be, be better able to help our employees access Munis, or the remote, you know, webinars, or the go-to-meeting, is there any different, you know, software pieces that came up?
So Munis is, is probably one of the leading financial applications out there. You know, for municipalities in, in Connecticut and, and Massachusetts, one of the other tools that you have is Office 365, and Office 365 provides certainly email, but it also provides collaboration tools that, to be quite frank, are not really being effectively used, it has some capabilities called Teams, Teams is a way where people can collaborate, you know, using, you know, and sharing documents, and, and I would say that's probably an area of opportunity. So when you look at your, your mixture, if you will, of different software solutions, you, you have some pretty good solutions in place, I think it's just providing some more training on them will be beneficial, I don't think we need to rip out and replace,
Right.
you know, areas, the only one, I mean, to be perfectly honest, is, you know, the Assessor Collector System, WALSH, nothing wrong with WALSH system, but if you were to take a look at the various, you know, municipalities, I would say, a, a number of them have a, a different product called QDS, and, and it, it, it certainly, I think, may be a step above WALSH, but that doesn't mean that we need to get rid of WALSH, it may be something that you wanna move towards in the future.
Got it, thank you.
The only thing I would add here, when we talk about, you know, tools and technologies that, that you should have in place, when we talk about that mobile device management or that MDM tool, from what I understand, IT does have a tool in place that they use on the school district side, it's just not being used for the town, and that would certainly be something that you'd wanna extend, especially with everybody being, you know, in and out or remote, so that if a mobile device gets lost or stolen, an iPad or a cellphone or whatnot, IT can find it, lock it down, wipe it, and so forth, and if you already have it, it's just a matter of extending it to, to a lot of town employees and devices.
I'm a big proponent of more coordinated centralized mobile device plan and management system.
Yeah, yeah.
David?
All right, I'm struggling a little bit to find the exact phrasing for this question, but I hopefully I'll be able to get this across. You've laid out a whole lot of items that the town really needs to work on and improve, and you mentioned specifically that there's, that there's no long-term strategic plan or governance plan in place, but the only personnel that you specifically referenced adding was maybe someone for public safety IT, you did mention a steering committee, of which the IT director should participate, but the IT director works for the schools, not the town, so I guess the right, the question I'm asking is, if you looked at a town that had the number of departments, number of systems, level of complexity that we have, and could, you know, and had a free, free hand to recommend IT department and structure, what would that recommendation look like?
I, I would tell you that what I, I think is a, a good appro, instead of trying to hire two people, right, for, for the municipality and have them dedicated to the municipality, I think a better approach, and, and approach that, you know, a number of municipalities are looking at, is more of a, a, a centralized shared services approach, so that we can create a, a core set of technologists that are providing services to both the school district and municipality, and you have a, a broader set of skill sets and, and capabilities, but the problem with what exists today is that there, right now, there is no agreement as to the, the detailed services that they're gonna provide you, they, you know, there's a technical engineer, it's not well-defined as to roles and responsibilities, and then we have a, a collection or allocation of other people within this IT department, I think that if, if, our recommendation, to be honest with you, my recommendation, or, our recommendation, is to invest in this centralized group, but define it better, transform it into something that will have a better impact on the municipality, and if that means to invest in another person in this group, okay, that, that will help the schools, that will help, more importantly, the municipality, and we just need to better define how and what that help looks like, we need to really get into what that service level agreement is and looks like, because if we have a problem, let's say there was an issue on, on public safety, you know, we could allow multiple people to start dealing with what's going on with public safety, it's not just one person, it could be three or four, based on the collection of IT support personnel that we have collectively.
A true shared service, in other words, yeah?
A true shared service, and, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I was just gonna say, Jeff, you used the word allocation, and if I remember correctly, the contract, it is like, you know, you get ten percent of this person, and they're expected to do these few things, you get a hundred percent of this person, and you get, I do believe the director, you get a cut of.
It's a fifteen percent.
Right, so to speak, so I, I think it's more about.
Here's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Bye.
No, I was gonna say, but here's what isn't defined, for that fifteen percent, we don't need to debate if that's the right percentage, right, but for that fifteen percent, what are we getting, what, what is the roles and responsibilities that that technology director is going to provide the municipality, that's not defined anywhere, right, and we haven't defined a lot of these rules and responsibilities, because right now, they're just providing, you know, break-stick services at best, right, and I think we need to transform that into something bigger, broader, and better. broader, and better. And it might make sense to invest in, or, you know, get another person within that group, right, that can, that can be part of shared services where we need that skill set. Can I ask you a question, by the way? Is it, is that...
Yeah, I like the concept of a shared, completely shared services and, you know, the way that you explain it in terms of the fact that the agreement that we have doesn't really delineate what the roles and responsibilities are. And, you know, for example, if the town were to develop a long-term strategic plan, who would develop the plan? How would we maintain it, implement it, and evolve it over time, right? So, that's, that's kind of where I was headed.
Well, I think the steering committee and governance group can certainly help in the development of the plan with the director of technology, with the discussions from the various departments, and come up with an overarching plan. And they would help to oversee the implementation of that plan as well. Because we have limited resources, both on a people's side and on a dollar's side, right? And we want to make the best use of our technology initiatives and purchases for the municipality. And, and I think by working together as a team, you know, that group can help deliver on that.
Okay.
I think from an IT leadership perspective, you don't have, the director right now is not leading the town from a technology perspective. It's more like the town is borrowing IT support from the school district. And I'm sure it feels like the town is second to the school district. But under a true shared services setup, you know, IT is serving everybody and the strategic plan will meet the needs of everybody. And IT can sort of lead, direct, and feel empowered to strategically work for both the town and the school district.
Krista?
So, picking up on that same concept, when I went through the report that I was, could you help me understand why bullet number six or point number six, the steering committee, was deemed medium risk? Wouldn't that be our next step to, to help better understand how we would create this document to delineate services? I thought that would be our next step, but you have that as medium. So, could you explain that?
I think you make a very good point, Krista. Should it be medium? Probably not. It, you know, as we're talking about it, I think it does take on a much bigger and larger role in helping to direct the municipality. So, to be quite frank, I think we do need to change that to a high risk, because that is an important step that needs to be part of the overall game plan.
Right, because I saw so many recommendations and action steps and prioritizing between high, critical, et cetera. And in order to even embark on this, we would need to have a body in place to do more research as to what our next steps are. So, that was just my takeaway in reading it.
Yeah, no, you bring up a great point. Thank you.
And that body would have to necessarily include representation from the public school side. If we're going to, you know, really make a culture change and shift to a true shared service model, you know, we would want to be all-inclusive in that regard, so that everybody feels as though it's, it's a unilateral win. Whatever the outcome is, is a win for everybody, not, you know, one, one area of government gets more and better services and, and the other gets less. That can't be the outcome. So, it's got to be a true collaboration.
Correct. There's no winners or losers. There is a game plan to work together as a team to address problems. And I do believe that we need to develop, you know, what is, what does that service level agreement look like? What is the, how, you know, how are we going to prioritize? What does take priorities, as I think, you know, Lindsay mentioned earlier? And I think that can, that needs to be established and agreed to between, between both school and municipality, and, and, you know, make sure that everyone's on the same page. But now we've got a collection of, we have a good technology group that can, you know, if there is, you know, significant issues or problems, we can take, you know, the resources that we have and redeploy, redirect them to mitigate those risks and issues as soon as possible. But it's done as a team, not done individually. And I agree that the school district needs to be a participant in this.
Kip, did you have any questions?
No.
Not yet. Krista?
Going back to the public safety IT, could you elaborate more from your research in working with other municipalities of like communities, do you find that's a standalone individual? How do you see that playing out of a community like a Darien?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, like Darien versus Hartford.
Yeah, so with public safety, it's a bit all over the board. There are some, in particular, police departments that say you need to be a sworn officer to support, in particular, the software applications, and in many instances, hardware, the MDTs, because you may be exposed to, you know, confidential information. And I certainly recognize that. There are others who say, you know, we have agreements with our employees that they recognize and sign off on some type of confidentiality agreement and make it a more formal process. I, I believe that the investment should be in technology people that really understand, you know, various applications and the technologies. I'm not sure that the sworn officer is the right approach. But I can tell you that I've worked with some municipalities who the police chief, you know, doesn't necessarily agree with that approach and wants a sworn officer in place. And I, to be quite frank, I'm not exactly sure where the town's police chief sits on this topic.
Well, the good news is, he's here in the room listening to this conversation, so... I'm sure that he will think about it and give us his opinion at some point.
But based upon the clients with whom you work, is this, Jeff, where do you see that falling more?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Based upon the clients with whom you work, where do you see that, what is quote-unquote "best practice" in regard to this one particular?
It is not the sw, it is, it is not the sworn officer, right?
Oh, okay, okay. Just curious.
You know, other, it's really just regular technology people, support people within the IT area. And the reason why I think that's the best approach is, if we're having a real issue with public safety, right, we, we may need more than one person addressing the problem. We may need, you know, when that sworn officer is not available, what do we do? Well, we need to have a team of people that can, you know, come in in a very quick manner and deal and address. And it's not just one person. It may be three or four people if we're having a real technical issue with some servers or access to public safety, you know, to their CAD or our records management system or dispatch system. And so, we need to be able to be in a position to better support, in my opinion, police and, and to some extent, fire, with more and better resources.
Right. I would say maybe 10 years ago, we saw, you know, a sworn officer that sort of worked as the in-house go-to-IT person for public safety. But certainly, the municipalities that we've been working with have been getting away from that. And we're definitely seeing more integration with, with the town as a whole. You might have a dedicated body that is a specialist within the centralized IT group, but we're definitely seeing less and less of that in-house sworn officer doing all the IT stuff, especially with all the devices that are in place now.
Right. Very true.
A couple of comments and questions from me. This is Jamie. Do you work closely with Kerma on the security risk, cybersecurity part of IT planning? They have a very robust program regarding cybersecurity.
They do have a good program. And, and, you know, Kerma has been in a number of clients that we've worked with. They, I believe, have some good training program as well, programs as well. Kerma, you know, I'm not, the only thing I don't know about Kerma is their capabilities to come in and do a vulnerability scanning, security and scanning assessment, where you actually come in and perform an assessment, scan all the devices, look for patches that have not been applied, or application updates, and also look at security policies and protocols. So, that's the one thing I don't know if Kerma does.
Yeah, they, certainly as we move into this, we should join with them, because I do think they have a number of those services.
They certainly have a good training program, I would say that.
I really like, under your recommendation 10, the town services that can be offered online or in a virtual town hall format. You know, we began moving in that direction pretty rapidly with COVID. So, that's a positive. And I would love to, to see us continue in that direction. I don't really see that as remote workforce preparedness as much as a, a customer service initiative to, to create virtual town hall services. So, I, I, you know, like to give some consideration to breaking that out as its own objective.
I, I think item 15 is more what you're looking at or talking to, right?
Virtual. Okay. So, I was, I was referring to item 10 under recommendation B6. And then I see that you go further with that in number 15. So, are they, are they one and the same?
Well, I think on 10, we're looking at is, what, if employees are working remotely, what are they authorized to do virtually? And what types of things can they do from home? And what types of things do they need to do in, in the office, so to speak? Does that make sense?
Got it. Okay. Yep.
Yeah, and I would say that the item 10 is more of the internal remote workforce, if you will.
Yep.
And then 15 is more of the virtual, more impact on the residents.
Got it.
Yes.
Look, can I ask a question staying on 15 with the virtual town hall? Is that a separate platform that we would have to incorporate? Or is that, is that functionality, could that be built into our current web, website? How, does that work?
It, it could be a separate platform, although I'm not recommending that. There's a lot of capabilities in some of the tools that you have right now. I, I believe in, let me just get the right name. You have CityView. CityView is the building, planning, zoning, permitting type of system. CityView is a web-based application. And I think, actually I see here, it's going to be replaced by Viewpoint in the very near future. But either one of those platforms, and my, my point is, has a lot of very strong capabilities to be impactful to the residents. And that's what we're trying to get to. What can we do to enhance, you know, the capabilities of our residents to, to pay for things, to, to apply online for permits? And that the, the Viewpoint will allow you to do that. I, I know, I don't know about the WALSH system, which obviously has an impact on people. I, I know QDS has, which is the, the system I was referring to earlier, does have some direct integration with a number of banks, so you can pay things online. So, I don't know if that helps at all.
So, just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, then, Viewpoint, the new platform which our planning and zoning is moving toward, could be used or expanded upon to accomplish the goals you lay out in 15?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, a number of them, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Across other departments as well, because right now, it's going to be rolled out for planning and zoning and buildings, and with a bridge to the tax department, likely, correct?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll have options where, they'll be firing information there, health information assessment. But I think, Krista, to your point, what we really need to do with our virtual town hall is make it easier for the end user to go from one to another.
Correct.
There's a lot of things you can do online right now.
Right.
But you have to go into the tax software, come back out, go into the planning software, come back out, go into the Parks and Rec software. So, that's, what I think we need to do is make it easier for our end user to stay in one place.
Absolutely. No, that sounds like those were the objectives of 15. And Viewpoint will meet all or many of the goals outlined in 15.
Correct. But let me just add something there. I, I think part of this is, it needs to be looked at holistically, and not just how is this one, how, you know, how is this one department going to use it, or, you know, building versus planning versus health? It needs to be looked at holistically in how all these departments can and will be able to share information, and how we're going to be able to get information out to our residents, our customers. And I bring that up because if we don't look at it that way, we're gonna, it'll ultimately turn into different silos that we have right now. So, we need to look at it in a more global way. I've seen other municipalities who have implemented a system like Viewpoint, and, and all they did was they just remanufactured what currently exists, and didn't really give it a lot of thought about, you know, how can we expand the use of these technology tools and create, you know, some of the virtual capabilities that we're talking about. So, I think we need to have that discussion now, before it is fully implemented and installed, so that we can ensure that long-term. And we, you know, from the virtual perspective, we, we're creating and setting up and configuring it so that we will be able to use that virtual environment, you know, when we get to it several months down the line.
Right, right, right. That makes sense.
Kate?
You know, David had a similar question before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Well, I guess that sort of takes me to my next question, and whether Kate and Jay Big, does Boem Shapiro then serve as a consultant to work through this? Or is this the responsibility then of the steering committee? Or do we have staff on hand who is comfortable taking these recommendations and running with it? What is like a next step? Because I definitely don't.
I guess, I guess if I could... That might depend on, you know, we could likely engage Boem Shapiro to assist us in the process. That's an additional cost.
So, they also serve as a consultant to implement the plan. So, right now, we...
I believe they'd be willing to.
And I would, I would like to hear a little bit more about other municipalities in Connecticut that you may have worked with to successful conclusion.
You mean from an implementation perspective? Or, I'm not sure I understand the question. I apologize.
Yeah. You know, are there other towns that you went through a similar planning process, gave recommendations, and then stuck with them and helped them through implementation?
Yes, I'm just, I'm going through my rolodex right now. I apologize.
No worries.
The city of Norwalk is one that we have worked with to perform a technology assessment relatively recently. And we've been helping them and guiding them on, you know, various initiatives that, you know, not only from a prioritization perspective, but, you know, how to, how to ensure that things get implemented correctly. We work with an organization, or are working with an organization actually in Massachusetts, which is a quasi-governmental organization. They, they actually serve a community called Devens, which is a municipality within Massachusetts. And we're actually working with them on the, helping put together that governance committee, the governance standards, and helping to, help them understand how to move forward with the number of initiatives that were identified for them. So, we've done it for a number of municipalities.
I think Duxbury, Jeff, too?
Oh, yeah, Duxbury, too, Massachusetts stuff. So, I don't know if that helps.
Okay. No, that's great.
I think, you know, look, the reality of the situation is, we want to get you started. And I said this to Kate when we first started this project. You know, success of this project is not handing you a report. The success of this project is handing you a report where you can... is not handing you a report. The success of this project is handing you a report, reviewing it like we are today and making sure that it does not collect dust. Because to be quite frank, if it collects dust on a shelf, then we failed. And I take it very personally. And so we certainly want to help you move forward on the various initiatives that are in here. I think, I think it was Krista who made the point about the governance committee, not medium as high, and I do agree with you on that. And I think that's a great place to start because then we can put together the game plan for the, not only the steering committee, governance standards, but also working with, you know, the board of ed and the IT group so that we can really define what our requirements are as a municipality and how we can bring a team together to make this impactful for both organizations, the school district and the municipality as a whole.
I think one of our next steps will certainly be to meet with representatives from the school district, you know, to share what our thoughts and vision is for how to move forward and, you know, see what kind of a working relationship we can establish to achieve that goal.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other questions for the folks from Blum Shapiro this evening? I'm sure there'll be things that will come up, additional questions. We'll all filter those through Kate back to you. We very much appreciate all of your time this evening.
Our pleasure. And if we need to have a second meeting, just let us know.
Perfect. We very well may.
Okay, yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. If there's nothing more on this topic, then we will move on to first selectmen's report. First, on behalf of the board of selectmen and the town of Darien, I express my deepest sympathy to the family of our town clerk Karen Diller, who passed away on Saturday. Karen worked for the town for eighteen years and was a beloved member of our town hall family and she is going to be deeply missed. We will certainly share any information that we receive about arrangements or services or how folks can express their condolences. Some of you have already heard that over the weekend, three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, there are thirteen new cases of COVID in Darien. The cases range in age from sixteen to eighty-five. Fully anticipate that by this Thursday, when the state updates their data, Darien will join the rest of southwestern Connecticut likely in the red alert category, unfortunately. Governor Lamont has announced a new Apple and Android based app for contact tracing called COVID Alert CT. For those who sign up, if you've been within six feet of someone who tests positive and you've spent more than fifteen minutes in their general vicinity and they have also signed up for this app, you will receive an automatic notification of your exposure. You can get the app at ct.gov/COVIDAlertCT, one word. Last night's storm was probably bigger than any of us anticipated it would be in terms of the residual damage. This afternoon, we had about fifty-two individual trouble spots with downed trees and wires, poles broken, transformers broken. Darien was the hardest hit community in southwestern Connecticut. Currently, or at the beginning of our meeting, we had six hundred and eighty customers still without power. So we're moving in the right direction. That's eight point four percent of the town. Global restoration time for the town of Darien is by eleven forty-five PM tomorrow evening. A global restoration time means it should be at the outside of the restoration. So restorations will continue between now and then and restoration should be completed, knock on wood, by eleven forty-five tomorrow night. As of this evening, Hindley and Tokenique schools still had no power but are estimated to be back online this evening. Dr. Adley will be communicating with the district about any school schedule changes and I know that there are folks that are testing the bus routes to see if there are any blocked roads that would impede bus travel in the morning. So I don't have any additional information about that. And that's my report, Kate.
Just to follow up on what Jamie said, you know, Karen's death has hit employees hard. So we are working to take care of them. We do, we will be notifying the state of the vacancy in position tomorrow. We do have three assistant town clerks, so we are okay. You know, they can perform the work at the powers and duties of the town clerk. Under our charter, it will be up to the board of selectmen to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term. So I suggested to Jamie that you should, in the near future, have a meeting, I believe you can do an executive session because we'll be discussing personnel, where you discuss how you want to move forward with them. Because it will be important to have it filled and that person would fill it for the remainder of the term, which was through January two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Reports from selectmen serving as liaisons. I think we received something from Kate. David, I know we got a report from you.
Yep.
Is there anything that you'd like to report in person this evening?
The main thing that I wanted to mention in person is I wanted to give a personal thanks and the town should give thanks to Jim Medsger. He served on the BLIT committee since its inception. He was our chairperson until our meeting just this past Thursday and then he is stepping down and stepping off of the commission. So I think the most important thing is that we all say thank you to him for his hard work and implementation on the BLIT committee. Most everything else is detailed fairly thoroughly in the report that I provided. Suffice it to say that based on either duration of time since the official BLIT notice has been served or lack of any meaningful material progress, the committee voted to begin to assess fines on three additional properties in town. We also voted to reassess the lien on the one longstanding property to make it reflect the current value of the incremental fines that have accrued since the lien was initially established. And there is one other property that was on the watch list that we determined to serve an official BLIT notice on. And there are a couple of other miscellaneous things, but not as important as those. So those are the highlights.
So just a question from me. I didn't get a chance to watch your last meeting. Are, is the committee cognizant of the sort of time period that we're in right now that, you know, people are struggling and folks might have special financial considerations right now and not be able to keep up with their properties? Have you discussed the timing of?
That hasn't been, that wasn't discussed specifically. I'm confident in saying the committee will be willing to work with people. In some cases, we have properties that have been officially served a BLIT notice for three years and made no material progress. In one case, the owner has been served and has failed to interact with the committee whatsoever. So in, you know, certain circumstances, we feel like, you know, at least beginning the accrual of the fines and the official notification thereof will potentially light a fire under some of those people to engage with us to hopefully move them forward. And obviously, we would take into consideration any financial difficulties anyone may be having at that particular time.
Questions for David on his report?
Thank you.
Well, the Oxbridge Building Committee met again this morning. We have a give you a report of where we stand after this morning's meeting, which lists all of our bid packages, which were budgeted at forty-nine point seven million dollars. We're now at forty-three point two-six-seven million dollars, over twelve point nine percent below our budget number. We've awarded eleven out of the twenty-six bid packages, which represent roughly thirty-three million of the forty-three million dollars at risk in our lowest bid category. So I think that we're making real progress. We have some more to do and we'll probably have another package that we will approve on our December fourth meeting, I believe it is, or maybe December third, whatever that Thursday is. There's going to be a presentation this Wednesday night to the Oxbridge parents and community to talk about the project. We think that we'll be starting somewhere in late November, actually breaking ground with everything, if everything still falls in place as we should, will, probably will. And so we're still, everything is going forward full speed.
Can board of selectmen members be invited to join the parent meeting to listen in?
Certainly. We'll ask. The people are putting out the invitation.
Any questions for Kate? It's good news, Kate.
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, any other reports? Okay, moving on to new business. Discuss and take action to approve the board of selectmen meeting calendar for two thousand twenty-one. Any comments?
I just want to point out to you the, on the one that has all the colors, where I have the RTM meetings, these are just the ones that are required by the charter or the code. They may have more, but they haven't set their schedule yet.
Okay, if there's no comments or questions or challenges with this, then I will entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one calendar. Krista? I'm sorry, I did have a thought.
Yeah.
At budget time, do we want to have a public hearing before it goes to board of finance? Just for discussion? Are we doing the round?
You know, it's been done in the past. You're not required to. It's been done in the past and truthfully, very rarely did anyone come to speak.
I like the idea though. I think it's a valid idea. And can't we take one of these dates and have the?
Absolutely.
We can add it into one of the dates that's identified as a budget date to have the public hearing.
Fine, okay. I just think the process would be worthwhile.
Yeah. I think giving the public as much opportunity to weigh in is appropriate.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So you may want to think about doing it early in the process?
Right. Should we could put out the material? Okay. Or do you need to modify?
I'm not sure. Early in the process, you mean?
So before you, you know, my thinking is that if you wait towards the end of your process, you're getting their input.
At the end.
You know, at the end and just before the board of finance is doing the same thing. If you remember, the board of finance public hearing is before they start their work on the budget. So if you want to be informed by what the public thinks or do you want feedback on what you've done? So.
It's two different pieces.
Correct.
In theory.
So would you, you know, I think that's, do you want them to give you their ideas before you start working or do you want them to come and tell you what they think of what you've done? So think about that when you think on timing.
Well, you know, if you look at the days that you have set aside here, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh of January would be good, you know. You're going to present on the twenty-fifth. We'll have some discussions that night. The next time we gather, allow the public to come and weigh in and then we, and move into the meat of our discussions. Does that make sense? So have the hearing first, yeah.
Well, I think it would be important for the public to better understand what it is we're discussing so that they would react to it before we vote on the budget we present to board of finance. I think like board of ed, how they do it.
At the end. But then does that, does that, do you run the risk then of requiring that the board of selectmen go back and make further, have further discussions and make modifications depending on what you hear from the public? Because there's going to be a board of finance public hearing.
Correct.
On the board of selectmen budget. So I guess it's, what is, what is the objective of hearing from the public? Is it to hear what they hope we will consider in our deliberations? Or is it for them to give feedback on the decisions that we have decided to make?
It would seem they're going to give the feedback to the board of finance public hearing. So why do that? Why do it twice? And if you want to hear what they have to say before you do your budget work, that's fine. Give you some guidance, you know, what people are concerned about. But if you're going to have a board of finance public hearing, which they do have, before they do their consideration, that'll be considering what, there'll be, our budget recommendations will all be there for them to talk about.
But the board of ed side, granted, the role of the board of finance is different between the two budgets, but board of finance, the board of ed has a public hearing independent of the board of finances public hearing, granted because they don't have line item.
You make, I think the point is, in order to determine what to have, you need to decide what you want it to tell you.
Yeah.
Do you want it to influence your decisions before you make them?
Right.
Or do you want feedback on your decisions after you make them? You know.
And my comment would be.
And I don't think you need to decide right. Okay, but you know.
There's going to be feedback anyways. So do it early because you'll still have feedback at the end, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there'll be feedback going to the board of finance and whatever we decide, that'll be in front of the board of finance public hearing.
Right.
So there'll be feedback then.
But we don't have a chance to act upon it once it's gone, once we vote on it.
Correct. And so maybe it's the way, it's the words we're using. Maybe we're looking at either having a public input session for the public to give us feedback in advance of our discussions or is, do you want it to be a public hearing so that folks can weigh in on what we've decided? If it's a public hearing, then we really have to do it at a point in time where if we want to further deliberate and change any of our decisions, because it would be pointless to have it to just then get feedback and pass it off to the board of finance.
Right, exactly. No, no, no. Absolutely.
Right. So maybe even early on in the process.
But I want people to be informed of what are we thinking, what's been.
That's, that's kind of what I was a little bit concerned about. If you have it, you know, straight early in the process, the public may or may not be informed at all about what's, about what's included. So their ability to provide meaningful guidance may be limited.
So maybe if you think about towards the end.
With the working session.
Like the second or the third of February, including there.
And I would think maybe the second to have a third as a working session to debate if there's any changes that we want to make before we send it off.
I would like to give the public some time to distill what they've heard as we will be doing the same and to share feedback. That's before we vote and before we deliberate and vote.
Which would be on the eighth, right?
That's what I've proposed, is that you have a meeting, your regular meeting would be on the eighth and just incorporate your final vote.
Right.
So you've done all your work and the eighth would be the.
So that's our budget vote.
Yes. So the second might be the time because then you have, you know, with this schedule, you have a meeting on the third where you could implement anything, make any changes based on the feedback you got on the second.
Kate, does this current schedule of, you know, several different kind of topics a night allow for those two nights to be kind of discussion nights, final discussion nights, whether one's a hearing or both are both discussion days?
You know, I don't have the breakout of the individual meetings in front of you, but I think, yes, a lot of that really depends on how late you guys are going to work, you know. Because you could have a public hearing starting at seven o'clock and then continue working as much as you want, you know.
I'm fine with adding a public hearing. I mean, maybe we can work out the details later, but, you know, adding a public hearing into this budget schedule. I'm fine with adding a public hearing. I mean, maybe we can work out the details later, but hope, you know, adding a pu- public hearing into this budget schedule. And I'm fine with the second, if that makes sense to everybody. Kate, could we add on to, maybe it's, no, it's, on, on this work plan? It would be helpful, I think, for us to see on here when the budget gets delivered to the Board of Finance. And then when the budget gets.
Their full scheduling.
To the RTM. I know it's not Board of Selectmen.
Oh, so on the one that has the work plan, okay, yes.
Anything that, anything that we would want to attend, you know, in defense of our work, budget work, et cetera.
Go down to the bottom of the page.
There you go. March, all right.
You know what was helpful on?
Do you want them put into the?
Yes, please.
And you know what would be helpful also, Kate, if you, when the budget book is actually put together? I know this is very helpful, I thought, on the Board of Ed side, is that those dates were in our budget book. So you're constantly looking at your budget book and you have the dates all right there.
Okay, so you want these dates put in the budget book?
Yes, which I think we did last year. Do we? I can't remember.
I think, I think we did.
And the, the, but the RTM vote would be slated for May tenth, right? Is that what the?
That is what the Charter prescribes.
Right.
Which is helpful, having all those dates in the book.
Thank you, Kate.
Okay, any other comments about the meeting schedule? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule with the addition of a public hearing scheduled for February second. Sarah moves, we have a second.
Second.
Just a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, discuss and take action, which wasn't actually my intent, I just wanted to continue to discuss certain Charter changes. And Kate's put together a little memo here for us on the things that we talked about. With things we agreed to, things that Wayne is following up on, and things that need additional discussion. I don't know, Kate, can you give us an update on where we are with Wayne follow-ups?
We are not. We've been busy with other things.
Okay, understandable. Okay, so. I open the floor for discussion. Yes, Kate?
I just want to make one other point, that for the public, that you will be making suggestions to the RTM.
Right.
It's up to the RTM what they do with the suggestions you make.
Correct, and just because we've thrown some stuff out doesn't mean, you know, we're, we're moving, necessarily moving in that direction, so. We're having a discussion and, and the goal really is to just be helpful with some things that, that, you know, we all have seen. Certainly that Kate has, you know, works with the Charter all the time and she's seen some things that need some correction, so. It's all in the spirit of, of being helpful with good governance and nothing more than that. Shouldn't be misconstrued as, as anything more than that.
Do you want to go line by line?
Sure, yeah. So is, do you guys want to vote on these individually tonight? Is that what you want to do? My feeling is that, is that we should, even if we, if, even if we vote on these things individually tonight, I'd like to hold these and ultimately deliver to the RTM a full package of our recommended changes. Rather than doing it piecemeal, I don't think that that's.
Yeah.
I don't think that will be well received or productive really.
No, I agree. One, one presentation.
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go one by one. The first one was to add hyperlinks to the Connecticut Generous General Statute's references in the code. I think, I'm hoping we can all agree that that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I actually think that's one that doesn't need the RTM approval. I think that's a, a software issue.
Oh, fine.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, um, do we have to vote on that one, do you think?
Does that need to go to the RTM or can we just?
She just said she's.
Yeah, yeah, no, we don't.
All right, so we want to.
No, I believe it.
Um, I, you know, with the Wayne, the things that are Wayne follow-up, I, I'm not in a position to further discuss or vote on anything that we don't have enough information about yet.
I would agree.
Thoughts?
Yeah, I just was curious on one of the things that we had for Wayne follow-up.
Sure.
Did you want, you had, I didn't know if you were, do you have something you wanted to say?
No, no, I'm sorry, I said I wasn't prepared until we hear from Wayne on anything that he is applying.
Yeah, no, I just had a question on, we were talking about, you had brought up the point about adding First Selectmen as an ex officio member of the Boards and Commissions. And I just was curious if you could expand upon what you were thinking when you kind of had brought that up. I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I think this suggestion comes from a great desire to enhance collaboration with other boards and commissions. And, you know, I think it's entirely possible to be able to do that in different ways. You know, I think some people are, are nervous about, about that. I certainly would love to consider, though, potentially, having the First Selectmen be ex officio to the Police Commission. But I'm, you know, I'm willing to, to, to revise this and, or eliminate it in its entirety.
You know, it's important to, you know, ex officio doesn't meet you a voting matter.
Yeah, you, let us explain what ex officio means.
That's not necessarily true, though.
Okay, no, I, I want a clarification and that's something I was going to ask Wayne.
Ex officios do vote.
No, I don't have a vote on planning.
I don't know that I would agree with that. Ex officios can vote and can be full voting members.
Where do you know that from?
Looking on many different boards and commissions. I would also, I've looked online, I've been a part of boards, ex officios can vote. And so I would love to get some guidance on that. Because that may or may not change a perception of whether or not this would move forward.
The intention would be, when, when, when we discussed this before, I think, I think I was clear and said I, I don't believe the First Selectmen should have a vote. But, you know, it, really, it's just in an effort to, to build better bridges of collaboration.
So, and I think that's fantastic. There's, I can't think of any board or commission that would not welcome you to the meeting, obviously, and then love to put you on the agenda and, and, and have that collaboration. I do, the voting piece is a concern. And I am curious if in the Charter, it does state that the Police Commission will be the only one to which other appointed commissions that you would not be a part of. And I am curious as to why. I don't know when that was written, whether it was written ninety five years ago, the whether it was written five years ago. I am curious because that would be a discussion point.
A good discussion.
Yes.
Kip, you, you asked about the, the reference. I found that reference in, on a website called boardeffect.com. What is the role of an ex officio board member? So it's a specific website dedicated towards governmental organization things.
I mean, I know that from our committee, ex officio members do not vote and they have no right to vote. And I, I thought from the Robert Rules Order that I had, the ex officio members defined as non-voting members, but there may be some citation out there that gives them the right to vote.
I did not check Robert's Rules of Order, so maybe that was a shortcoming.
No, I mean.
I just did a quick check and they can be voting members in some instances. So it would be important, if that's the intent, is to simply.
We can clarify.
Give you a presence at the table that they're non-voting, but you want the First Selectmen to be a non-voting member, I think that would be important to clarify.
That is the intent, and I believe that is what I said, what is proposed, absolutely.
And to clarify, these are boards and commissions that are constituted by the Board of Selectmen.
They're not elected boards and commissions, correct?
Not the elected ones.
Right, so these are, these are commissions and boards from which are constituted by this body, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so to me, there's already, to solidify that relationship, I don't feel is inappropriate, so I would.
Krista, can you expand? What, do you mean by all of, like, Board of Finance, Board of Ed, is, is that what you mean by?
No, that's what I wanted to, I'm thinking Park and Rec Commission.
Okay.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
I thought the First Selectmen is already ex officio, non-voting member of Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I'm thinking then Park and Rec. Mindments and Ceremonies, we'll use that one. That these are bodies that were already voting to put on their members, so to have the First Selectmen be ex officio. We already have this relationship with this entity that I don't think it's a stretch to say that the First Selectmen would be ex officio.
Well, I just want to. Non-elected, I think, is probably.
Or non-elected, we can clarify.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it's like all boards and commissions, so I think that is the piece that, yeah.
Yeah, I meant non, I assume this was non-elected, I think.
I don't think you can, you know, legally, you can't insert yourself on a, on an elected board.
An elected board. Well, I think we need to clarify then exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So I think the Police Commission, but the fact that it's the only one that stated that, would be curious as to the history and I think it's worthy of, obviously, a discussion, but. I am curious, so the, the current Charter states that we have you to be a member of the appointed commissions with the exception of the Police Commission, is that correct?
I believe that's true, that's why it's in the Wayne, Wayne to clarify column.
All right. I certainly can't think of any of these appointed commissions that you would not be, obviously, welcome with open arms as far as, you know, coming and, and being on the agenda. The question that I hope would be the other boards, um, the Finance or, you know, the other ones, and then to be a learning member.
Like which ones? But, but they're like.
Can I just make a suggestion when you're, when you're thinking about this? Don't be thinking about Jamie.
Right.
No, no.
You've got to be thinking about any person occupying that seat.
Of course.
What that might mean.
Of course. I do think that, well, I, I guess I've imagined there's always been an excellent collaboration and spirit and communication and that we have these, that we work together. There are independently, but we do work together, so I just was curious more about what you were thinking.
Yeah, you know, I think in, in doing the work that I've done over the years, I'll use Planning and Zoning as a good example. Because the First Selectmen sits as ex officio member, doesn't attend the meetings per se. I can, and, and the First Selectmen is invited to give input. The First Selectmen does not have a vote. But it creates a link and the chairman, from time to time and when necessary, because of that ex officio relationship, reaches out to the First Selectmen. Asks proactively for input on certain things related to the development of the town. And I think that's a very beneficial and a very healthy relationship. And I, but I don't think that that would exist necessarily without the formality of that ex officio position. Because they're very autonomous. Planning and zoning is a very regulated, regulatory body, so. I'm just giving my, my observations on how it's worked over the years.
Which is unfortunate, and I would think that all of the, you know, individually autonomous boards and commissions would have a good relationship with whoever is sitting in that First Selectmen seat.
Well, it's, a good relationship is different than a proactive relationship. I, you know, we should be very clear about that.
Do you mean more of a formal communication?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyway.
Well, I think when Wayne comes, if he could be, you know, brought up to speed as to our questions and the nature of this discussion, so he's prepared to, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
The voting aspect, elected versus appointed boards and commissions, aside from obviously Planning and Zoning, which is elected and stated already in the Charter.
Okay, David?
Can I request that the fifth item down changed Town Clerk, Tax Collector, and Treasurer to Appointed Officials? That that wording be changed to reflect what the actual suggestion was and what the actual discussion that we had on the second was, which was to convert them to town employees rather than appointed officials. Because right now, appointed officials does not reflect the actual record of what was suggested or what was discussed.
Yeah, thank you. You sent that in.
Or perhaps, I mean, may I make another suggestion? I think that was your point that was brought up. Maybe I would just make it more generic, that we want to address how the Town Clerk, the Tax Collector, and the Treasurer are employed.
What is their relationship?
They're related, I don't know what the verbiage is. I mean, maybe are they appointed or are they hired? We're going to talk about it, but we haven't gotten into the meat of this discussion because we don't have a lot of data. So I would have just made it more generic. We're going to talk more about how the Town Clerk, the Tax Collector, and the Treasurer are employed or are hired or?
Chosen.
Chosen, chosen, I like that word. It doesn't, it doesn't take what you're saying, David, I, you have a thought in one direction?
Uh, yeah, you know, normally that there are rules and procedures for introducing items that are to be discussed by the Board or to be acted upon. And the idea of appointed officials has not been recommended by any sitting member of the Board. So to broaden the discussion on this bullet point, the only item that's been discussed by the Board heretofore is the language regarding employees.
So we're, we're, we're currently having a discussion of the Board and the correction is made to reflect how you wanted, the recommendation that you had to consider the Town Clerk, the Tax Collector, and the Treasurer to be considered as town employees. So that is duly noted. There are other members of the Board who might want to have additional considerations with this item.
Fair, fair enough, and I think, I think to that, to that increase this language about considering, you know, whether you call it the relationship with a town employee or appointed would be appropriate.
Yeah, I was just trying to make it more generic and then we, when we have more data from Town Council, I thought, then we can advocate or discuss more.
Sure.
That, that's all I meant, David, that's.
Yeah.
Good, so a, as we go down the list, looking at things that don't require Wayne follow-up, we have the, the thought about eliminating the requirement for two Board of Selectmen meetings per month. We wanted to have additional discussion about that, so I open the floor for discussion.
So one of the things I was thinking about was, having attended many Board of Ed meetings, you know, there's a, there's some time off in the summer. The time does not stop in the summer. And I knew that, you know, having the two a month, we, it sets up for, what, twenty four meetings? If there was a requirement to have it at, at a minimum twenty meetings, I don't know if that would significantly change the number of meetings. We could maybe set them at our. Our, our thoughts, what are your thoughts on that?
Part of me.
Would you prefer the two a month?
I guess I kind of want to hear from Wayne on it, but.
Oh, because we didn't put Wayne.
We don't need Wayne. I'm just curious what other municipalities do.
I don't know, my, my sort of sense is I feel confident that when there's business to be conducted, that Kate will ask us to have a meeting or recommend that we have a meeting and that we would all agree with that. I'm not sure that having to have a requirement of it is necessary.
I appreciate your point, but what concerned me when we say Kate or we say Jamie, that we are instituting, we're putting into, we're codifying people whom we know? That, that's, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate with you.
All right, well, then, then let me, let me rephrase.
Okay.
That, that whoever the Town Administrator, the First Selectmen, or any of the Board of Selectmen members who, at whatever time it may be, believes that there's business to be conducted, that the Board would be willing to meet to conduct that business. It's a difference between requiring a, a, a meeting versus will we all agree when there's work to be done, we all show up to do it?
Absolutely, and, you know, you use language like no less than.
Yeah.
Once per month, right? Or as needed, right?
Sure.
What do you think, Kate?
I'm, I'm a big fan of not forcing meetings by virtue of saying we have to have so many per month.
Right.
To me, that's, that is so passe, so silly. You, you have them when you have the business. Sometimes we just, we've had to make up time.
Yes, there've been times when we had very little to do and, but we had to have a meeting.
It's quick meeting.
And I think, you know, David's point is a good one. You, when there's work to be done, you're going to meet. And the problem with the way it is worded now is you might be required to meet simply because the Charter says you have to meet.
Right.
If, if no changes are made, the positive is there is nothing, there are no penalties built into it if you don't meet.
Correct. I would also say that probably when the time the Charter was written. This allowed for a regular opportunity for public input, right? Now we take public input in multiple different forms every day, you know, email, telephone, social media, whatever it is. So I, I feel like from a business perspective, to your point, we meet when we need to do the business of the town. And from a public input, we receive input regularly, routinely, and, and it's not constrained to the gathering of the Board, so.
I think that's, that is a good point. Though, does the charter, or where is it addressed, back to the point, in fifty years from now, if the board wants to call a meeting, what is the process and is that in the charter?
So, there are, um.
Special meeting.
Special meeting, there are regulations from the state that govern what you can do in that regard. So there's the FOI Act, which, um, says like you cannot have, you have to give twenty-four hours' notice for a special meeting.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood, I, let me rephrase my question, yes, I realize a special meeting warning and you can't stray from your agenda.
Okay.
But in the scenario where some Board of Selectmen members, collectively five people, feel there is work to be done and the person holding the town manager job says there's no work to be done.
Well, I don't think that should be up to the town manager.
Okay, alright, the first selectman.
That should be up to the first selectman.
Okay, the first selectman feels there's not work to be done and four people on the Board of Selectmen feel there is work to be done.
So I think that's a really good point and you should consider suggesting some mechanism for a majority of the selectmen to call a town manager.
Right.
Call a special meeting.
Call a special meeting.
So that's, okay, maybe then if we incorporated that, I'd be more comfortable in rolling off the two.
Is this something that, uh, we're, you want to vote on tonight or you want to hold on this?
I'm okay with it.
I'd ra.
You want to wait?
I'd rather wait and see how Wayne, so how do we, how would we?
Okay, well then we're going to add it to the Wayne column?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um.
Jamie?
Yes.
Um, I, just really quickly, can we, when we say we add the first selectman language, that first selectman serves as a liaison on behalf of the town as a running member of regional and state organizations? Can we list said known state, regional, and organizations?
We can, but it will change over time and that, I'm reluctant because when I joined First Selectmen, there was no COG.
Right. Right.
And then the COG appeared and it came with a responsibility, right?
Fully, I did, I don't mean to legislate the number, the organizations, just what the current list is, just out of curiosity.
Yeah. When you submit proposals to the RTM, include, um,
Examples.
Include that?
Right.
But then if the language is not the other one.
Right.
On, on that particular bullet point, the only thing that I can think of materially is we may need to specifically exclude, uh, any, um, regional board related to education because I think, because the Board of Education is a state, uh, entity, uh, that education-related items may need to be excluded from that one.
Yeah.
I can't think of another circumstance, but because of that, that certain relationship, but, you know, uh, I think someone like Krista, who served on the Board of Education, knows a whole lot more about that than me. But that, that was just the only thought that popped into my head.
Um, so there's little risk for the first selectman to sit on a regional board of education, so I don't think that should be a concern, but, um, absolutely the language could say regionals and state organizations, um, you know, as, as they pertain to the role of the chief elected official, right?
Sure, yeah.
Easy.
That, yeah, that works, I think that will lessen concerns.
Um, two quick questions, for the requiring any reports from advisory commissions prior to reconstitution? If we're requiring a report from something that is, is it dissolved or just prior to reinstatement? Or re?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because reconstituting sounds to me as if they hadn't existed, so we're requiring a report from something that didn't exist.
Well, you become, you do that every year, in December, you have to reappoint all the advisory boards.
Correct.
So the idea behind this was, I think, that if they don't submit their report, they don't get re.
Reinstated. So we, we dissolve them? Insam them?
Yeah, because if you don't reappoint them, they don't exist anymore.
Right, actually, the, the point of this in my mind was to give us some discipline about when in the calendar year we receive the reports from these advisory commissions so that it doesn't fall through the cracks. And if we do it, you know, at the, at the meeting or two prior to when we do our reappointments, and sometimes when we reappoint the committees, they are in fact reconstituted with new membership, different people, so, you know, the words.
I think the word piece reconstitution was the piece that I just forgot to mention, okay, got it.
So we could say reappoint, Kate, or reauthorize, I don't know, for, for a committee, I don't know what the right word would be.
Now, I'm looking back, we have that meeting, thank you, I was checking if, Kate, you put that in our calendar and we're meeting on Monday, December twenty-seventh? Um, is that, is that the day we want it? Uh, just a suggestion, that might be a.
A tough day.
Yeah.
Um, well, so, here's my thinking, December sixth is the state of the town for the RTM.
Yep.
And so that's what we've got coming this month, and it's going to be a little difficult. You know, we're going to have to keep your agenda, make sure your agenda is very short, to make sure that you are all done before they meet. So that's why I, you know, had, the first meeting is December thirteenth. If you're willing to meet back-to-back, you know, go December thirteenth and twentieth, if, or, you know, if you're willing to, um, you could always start here, just, if you wanted to go December sixth and December twentieth, you could start December sixth at six P.M.
Yeah.
So that you have lots of time, um.
Well, it would be happy, a lot of time because we would need to then go home to then go virtual for the meeting.
Let's hope, I am hoping in December twenty-one.
Next year.
Oh, we're talking about twenty-one.
Yeah, no, I'm going back to the.
We're not talking about, I thought we were talking about in two weeks.
I'm sorry. I would, no, because the point about appointing, I said, oh, that's a great idea, we should have it on our calendar, and Kate, you were way ahead of me, but then I looked at the date, which I didn't look at as carefully.
That's the piece that I.
But in, in future years, because we have several advisory committees that we need to hear from, we should really be hearing from them, like September, October.
I would agree.
November.
Yeah, so I was.
We don't want to backlog them into December anyway, but the reappointments could certainly take place, the first meeting in December if we've.
Heard from everybody.
And if you get rid of the need to meet twice a month. Alright, so maybe the reappointment moved to the thirteenth.
Okay.
And do you want to do act on, I mean, can we retroactively act on the twenty-seventh on our twenty-one calendar? Are we going to keep it?
You can, so if you want to go back and revisit your vote now, go right ahead, you can also, um, revisit it at any time. You know, we have to file the, the calendar with the town clerk in December, but you can change a meeting date, as long as you change it thirty days in advance, it's still a regular meeting.
Oh. Okay, that's why I don't want to put us into a special meeting, that's what I don't want to do.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I do not think December twenty-seventh is a productive date for this body.
Amen.
I'm going to put it out there.
Amen.
Um, so we, they can do it now or we can do it sometime between now and December, November twenty-seventh.
I would agree.
Um, we agree again.
I would go back to the sixth and the thirteenth, that's my vote.
Yeah. We have met here before and then wandered downstairs to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're here now.
That's all, I think we're going to be here.
I think you can do that. Alright, so, uh, the, are you going to make a motion to amend the calendar?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the two thousand twenty-one Board of Selectmen regular meeting calendar to the December meetings of December sixth and December thirteenth, rather than the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh.
Is that the, is that the right date?
You want, you want the back-to-back?
Or do you want the sixth and the twenty?
Or the six, uh, or, or open to discussion, I'm like, a motion that we revisit the calendar for December, open to discussion. Anyone want to revisit the calendar?
Kip.
No, I don't want to discuss any more of this, it's nine o'clock at night, we have other things to talk about, let's go on.
Okay. Okay.
Jesus.
I guess the motion failed.
Um, what I, what I will say is, if we leave the calendar the way it is, you can always make an amendment to the calendar.
Right.
As you move into the, to the year. Okay. Um, so. And your reports, I think, hopefully we are in general agreement about that. Um, Board of Finance meeting requirement to know later than the third Tuesday in November.
I have a question on the next one when you're ready.
Yep, um, go ahead.
So for the language for the attorney, you know, I was thinking quite a bit, one of the things I find interesting, and I don't know when that language was put into the town charter, could be, you know, a hundred years ago, I have no idea. But one of the things I've noticed over time is that certainly the legal world has become so specialized and so specific that, you know, the attorney that was on speaking about the police accountability bill had so much experience and so much knowledge in that particular arena, and having the ability for that very specific attorney to be able to work with the police if they had an issue, um, and I look at the education side and, you know, specialized is, is just become a very large animal. And, and having an attorney who's very specialized in that, I think, is very crucial. And I think having a town attorney, given everything that's going on, is, is very specific also, and I think allowing these boards to hire an attorney that does the very specific work that we want to have is, would be a very important thing.
So I, I read this item o, only as a question, not, not suggesting anything more than, um, trying to understand how it has evolved, that the town has an attorney that's different than the Board of Ed attorney.
So you're asking a question, not saying Wayne should be.
It's a question, it's a question.
Yeah, I think you were looking to add the language that enabled it.
Got it, got it, got it.
Good, for the language to exist, that they could go off and do.
I thought I heard that we should have Wayne be the council for the whole town for.
And, and I'm not, I'm not saying I want to add anything to the charter at this point, from my perspective, I want to understand how it all evolved before I can even craft a, a recommendation on what should or shouldn't be added.
Got it.
But we weren't opining on the relationship between the Board of Ed and their attorney, that was nothing, that was not.
I just think having specialized attorneys right now is helpful, I just wanted to.
Oh, yeah, 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 that wasn't my intention.
Got it.
Well, we do it often for, for things, um, yes. Okay, um, Board of Finance, update the notification for calling special meetings. I think that's fairly administrative, so. Alright, um, unless there's anything else to discuss on this, let's not vote on any of these tonight, let's set this aside if we're of your agreement, um, until we can get some more color from Wayne Box. And then we can move to take.
Sure.
Tom, good?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. Item number four, under new business, discuss and take action on a request to waive the town bidding requirements.
So, um, we are finding that we need to have a machine that will allow us to quickly, efficiently, and safely disinfect the, um, vehicles. Right now, we're using an outside service, for example, to disinfect police cars when necessary, it puts the vehicles out of service, um, until that service can be performed. We've identified a device that can, um, basically fog the vehicles, it could also be used in buildings, it's not strictly for vehicles, it would be used for rooms. The price is above our bidding threshold, but we'd like to be able to move quickly to acquire one, um, because we feel the need is, is coming up. We're going to need it more, so we're asking you to waive the bidding requirement for this purchase.
May I ask how much?
Yes, it's, um, and actually, it's, there's a transfer later in the, in the agenda.
Oh, it's the transfer later, okay.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Got it, thank you, we're going to touch the.
Can this be, um, reimbursed under any COVID funding?
Perhaps under the cares, um, I don't believe that it would be reimbursable under FEMA if we waived the bidding requirements.
Yeah. Right, okay. But if there's an opportunity, can we flag it for submission?
Yes.
We should have.
Yeah. Alright, um, so we have, is, are there any questions about waiving the bid? We have a resolution to waive the requirement for competitive bidding for the purchase of a decontamination system, I'll waive the reading of this resolution with your concurrence. Um, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution, Sarah moves. You have a second, Kip seconds, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye, aye, alright, thank you.
Aye.
Okay. Onto transfers, we have, uh, an emergency management transfer, uh, determined to our last discussion, from contingency of fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of this disinfecting unit. I'll entertain a motion to approve, Sarah moves, you have a second, Kip seconds, any further discussion?
Uh, I just would like a little clarification, um, which contingency account is this? And why does the money get transferred to program expenses instead of some capital equipment account?
Yeah, I had a question on the two.
That is the general contingency account and, um, I honestly cannot answer the other one. That was what the finance director recommended. So I'm sorry, I didn't anticipate that question, so I don't have an answer for you, but that was Jen's recommendation.
If that's, if that's Jen's recommendation, I'm comfortable with that, I just, the language to me, program expenses, sounds like.
Youth commission.
Training or youth division or something, right?
Yeah. I agree, I, I was questioning that too.
It didn't sound like, it didn't sound like the small capital account.
Yeah, it's, um, in different departments, it tends to mean, you know, a little bit broader things, so don't think of programs as we're running a program, but as expenses to carry out your program, and that's what in emergency preparedness, it's where we, we tend to budget things that, um, tools and equipment that are used for emergency preparedness.
Okay. So think, think of program as the program of disinfecting the, or emergency management or disinfecting the vehicles, either one, okay, got it, alright, sorry about that.
Emergency management.
Yeah. No worries, so we have a motion by Sarah, second by Kip, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, closed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, this next transfer, um, uh, we can eliminate the need for this transfer. It was to purchase a tent to be used at the COVID testing site, that's no longer necessary with our, our new testing park. So, you know, unless the emergency management director has a different use for it, um, I would recommend that he bring it back with a different description.
That we know how to prove it.
Yeah. Um, so we will, um, not entertain that request. Um, the next is a, and thank you for your patience, Chief Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you.
From the Darien Police Department, um, thirty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars from the Board of Finance Reserve to the Police Department's secure building access system, and we will give the floor to Chief Anderson for his patience.
As this board knows, our Police Department renovation now is about ten years old. And our building is equipped with a FOB system, access system, it's not keys. Your movement around the building and your movement in, in and around our secure building is only done through FOB access. There was a time until I was the chief, that the chief or the captains didn't have emergency access into our building if the FOB system went down. Because it's a secure building, we cannot emergency lock open, we have to emergency lock close for the most part. So, there was a time when I would have to call a volunteer fireman to get into my own building, and if there was emergency. That was not tenable to me, and certainly we resolved that where we do have, the captains and I have master keys to the building. We are the only ones that have master keys to our building and that is by design. And to meet security standards and to meet accreditation standards, we have to have a system that shows who is where in our building and why. Uh, we've been limping this system along now for three or four years. And when the building was done, and Kate knows, we came in a million dollars under budget for our building renovation. And some of those seams are now starting to show in the apartment.
That sewer pipe is...
Oh, sewer pipe.
That value engineering will get you every time.
The department head who comes to this board and, and asking for money, because anybody knows me knows I'm fairly cheap and I don't like spending anybody's money. But this system is one of such that we cannot go backwards, we cannot rekey the building and start giving out keys. In the recent past, just for example, you know, we, our, our maintenance man can't access his storeroom of supplies. We have to prop it open, because there is no way for us to reboot the system to regain his access. The chief and the captains were locked out of the administrative wing. We've had personnel locked out of communications, we've had personnel locked into communications. We've even had people locked in our booking area with people that you don't wanna be locked into that with. Right now, our evidence and property clerk, who has security clearance, one of the few people other than the chief that can get into the evidence and property room by design, is the only employee who can get into the evidence and property room. So the chief of police, right now, does not have access into something that he has to have access into. And the system, the ISONA system that they installed in our building, was kind of being sunsetted when they put it in. In its fiscal 20 budget, we, I crafted the document when Chief Osborne was here. And Kate can maybe back me up a little bit on this. The document that I presented was for seventy-eight thousand dollars and some change for a new Phoenix system, which is a non-proprietary system. And the board members that had been here for a while have heard me say, when our building was done, there was a lot of proprietary software put into our building, which is not the way to go. You are beholden to that company, if the company no longer supports it. And the ISONA system, the only software support that we got too was a phone number to call somebody in Colorado. The system was supported on the local server, so if someone lost their keys and their fob, someone had to come to the building and access the server and lock that credential out and issue them a new credential. Now with web hosting, it's done from afar. The people who have access can grant access and deny access without coming to the building. I think the software support on a, a web-based, cloud-based system certainly is going to be supported much more into the future. You're gonna see support there. Again, we're, we're, we're looking to buy something that doesn't do anything different. It just has to do with reliability and specificity, so we can meet our standards as far as safety and security in our building.
Sounds like, sounds like it just has to do it at all.
Pardon?
Sounds like it just has to do it at all, because the current system's not functioning.
You know, right now, it, it is a little bit embarrassing when you can't get into your own office. And despite the best efforts of our folks who run this system, cannot reboot it to get, to get that done.
Kip.
I called Kevin Cunningham on your police commission about this, because Kevin served on our security committee, as he went on to chief, for the school, and he has a strong background in this area. Kevin checked it out, and he said that this group, first of all, it's essential that this system be in place. For security, reliability, availability, we have to keep the records of people who go into, visit, do a check on a prisoner, we have to have that checked. All that stuff has to be done. The system put out by, he said, the new firm is called, I'm forgetting.
New England Traffic Solutions?
New England, we have, New England Traffic, he said they're, they're, they're given high marks. They did some due diligence, talked with the chief about it, talked with Chief, Captain Nitters, and, and he gave it a thumbs up and said it definitely is worthwhile. They have the state bid for building access of this type, so they have been vetted. When we were looking for vendors, USI Solutions, which is somebody that we had with this system, we were gonna go with them. And suddenly, their business management plan went downhill south really quick. And the people that we relied on and trusted no longer worked for the form, for the firm, and it was kinda under unusual circumstances as far as I was concerned. Or what was left in that firm was maybe not somebody that we wanted to work with anymore. Not to cast aspersions on them, but again, we want somebody that we can assure ourselves are gonna answer the phone on the other side. And we're gonna, if there's an issue, we call a support line and somebody can access the system, the system from afar and get us back up and running. Mr. Coons did say that, and one thing that I didn't, you know, we didn't state earlier on, but yes, and we have prisoners in the back. There are fob readers back there. We are required to physically check the safety and security of those prisoners, several times a shift in addition to watching them on monitors. So without having, if an officer goes back to check on a prisoner, he simply swaps, swipes the fob, you know, the fob. And that gives a, you know, recorded data point saying that Don Anderson was back there in front of that cell block door at 7:45 a.m. No ands, ifs, or buts, no paper trail, no making logs that you gotta maintain.
It needs to work.
It's right there.
It ma, it makes good sense, and, you know, this board supported the fob initiative, you know, evidenced in the budget money that we put forward. What I don't remember is why we cut twenty grand from the Hiverage Quest, or where, where that money got cut, I don't, I don't recall.
I created the document, and I, I was intimately involved with the budget and gave it to Chief Osborne. Where the number changed, I don't recall either.
May I ask a question? In the explanation, there seems to be a difference of ninety-four hundred dollars to purchase the additional two years of software hosting. Do we need to put that into this request, or is that for an additional fiscal year, is that for next year's budget?
I believe if you read it, the request would allow for the option two. That's what, in the last paragraph, second to last paragraph, it says.
Right.
We request an additional thirty-three, three twenty-five to supplement the original fifty-eight to complete as much as...
Oh, so this does cover option two?
Yeah.
I just wanna be sure, thank you.
Thirty-three, three twenty-five, and fifty-eight covers all.
That was my question as to why you, I mean, it's an extra two years, why you chose that option two versus one?
Well, you do achieve economy there by going out to three years, right? It is not substantially cheaper, but it is certainly cheaper to go on a three-year program. They're putting this system in, there's no doubt, if this system goes in, that we will, we'll be changing vendors, support vendors. This company is the company that's going to support this for us for the three years. It does save us a little bit of money by going out to three years. It can be done either way, but I, I do think, hopefully, we're not talking about building access, you know, three years from now, I don't think we will.
May I ask, did the police commission, was this presented to the commission?
Yeah, this has been discussed with the police commission on numerous occasions, including in executive sessions sometimes. We don't like talking about physical security of our building.
And they have, do they vote to approve this moving forward to the Board of Selectmen?
I don't think they took a vote, but I certainly think they recognize the utility and, and the need, the pressing need for this.
Yeah, I would think so, I just was curious as to their involvement in this process prior to you coming here.
Any further discussion? Yep, then I'll entertain a motion to approve a transfer of thirty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars from Board of Finance Reserve to the secure building access system at the Police Department. David moves. Sarah seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chief, thank you, and thanks again for your patience.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your officers and everyone's help last night, you know, it was difficult.
Yes.
That's part of what we do, so. But I'm glad there was, there was no injuries townwide, so it's always a good thing.
Thank you, Stacy.
Very glad your officer was safe too.
Okay, with your concurrence and any interest of time, I'd like to take one vote on these four appointments, I'll read them all.
Yep.
That's okay? Appointing James DeMark to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring on 11/30/21. Autumn Howard to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission with a term expiring on 11/30/22. John King to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring 11/30/21. And Nancy Natal to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring on November 30/20/22. I have a motion to approve those appointments. Sarah moves. I have a second.
Second.
Krista seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Great, thank you, we have regular meeting minutes of November 2nd.
Yeah, I actually'd like to, if you don't mind, I'd like to redo them and present them again to your next meeting, because I realize I left a lot of notes in there.
Oh, okay.
So they're not very professional.
Okay.
Would we prefer to do both the next, or just the...
Just the regular ones.
Okay.
To do the special?
That's great, so we have a special, we'll hold those for the next meeting, the regular meeting minutes. We have special meeting minutes of November 2nd. Any corrections, additions? If not, entertain a motion to approve this presented.
Sarah moves.
Sarah moves, may I have a second?
Sure.
Kip seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We received via email today, two public comments about our charter suggestions from Stacy T A and Carolina Magui. Those will be entered into the record. You know, hopefully, we've done a little bit more clarification this evening on the intent of our, of our project. Are there any other public comments received, Kate?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a reminder that we have a, a time deadline when public comment should be received. And I believe it's Sunday night by 7:00 p.m.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-four hours before the meeting.
Twenty-four hours before the meeting. So we welcome the public comments that we received today, and we'll enter those in the record, but it's just a reminder to the public. Agenda review.
It's a quick question that came up, Krista asked a question about whether or not the police commission had reviewed. And I was just curious if there is a regular procedure for any of the commissions? If they put forth a financial request, it is approved by the previous commission before it is presented to the Board of Selectmen? I don't know if there's a particular procedure that's followed or not.
I would say it varies.
Yeah. Yeah, like the Planning and Doning Commission doesn't really have financial...
Do they have their own budget?
Yes, well, the planning department has under the department.
Right, but I'm thinking, those would normally come up through the director. I'm just thinking of something like the Parks and Rec Commission, but that might come up through Pam.
Yep, that comes up in the department.
I'm wondering if, was this the only situation in which a cost would be put forth without...
Yeah, personally, I would like to see the regular, well, the governing or the entity overseeing that, the police commission, Parks and Rec commission, to at least have opined on these transfers before coming to us. I think they're more intimately familiar, ultimately, it does go to Board of Finance, so they are the end body. But I think it would be nice to...
I just wondered if there was a...
Have that, those who are most intimately involved with the workings of that department to opine on these.
So, you know, I think it's hard to make that universal. Because some commissions do not get involved in the administration of the offices related to their commission. So, you know, like the Planning Commission does not get involved in the administration of the Planning Office. So I'm, I'm not sure that all of them are gonna be in a great position to opine on them.
So how do we phrase it so the scenario this evening would be captured?
Well, generally speaking, the boards and commissions don't.
Oh, you don't want them to?
Yeah, Parks and Rec is probably the only one that ever does. And I think that just has to do with the nature of how they tend to operate. But when it's administrative, like if, even with Parks and Rec, if they were looking to do a transfer within some accounts, they don't usually get involved.
Because it would come up through Pam.
You know, thinking of it as a, as a transfer rather than a new, a new spending request would be a little bit different than maybe.
I mean, if that's what you want, you know, we'll just have to figure out how to make that happen.
You wanna, you wanna, I'd like to think carefully about that, maybe have more discussion, because some of those things end up being very operational-related. And, you know, we don't need to build a bureaucracy around something that, that isn't needed, but yet we should discuss it a little bit more and see what the ramifications of that are. Anybody else have thoughts on them?
I think what I'm hearing is that for new money requests, having the board that oversees the operating department opine is probably appropriate for transfers amongst accounts of monies that are already previously appropriated under a budget. I don't know that the, the board necessarily needs to opine on that. That's another, as, as you mentioned, that's an operational issue.
As long as they've had a discussion about it, this particular commission, we're certainly hoping to engage them more in the budget process. You know, they're, they're, they're one of the commissions that doesn't usually attend here when we do the budget. So maybe, you know, just in general, getting them more engaged in the financial end of the operations of the Police Department. I know they talk about it, they just are not usually present at our meetings.
Well, that's why I think it's a way to sort of formalize it, so, I don't formalize it, but just...
It's a, I'm, I'm just thinking here, because it's a curious, because the power of the transfer really belongs to the Board of Finance.
Exactly, no, as I say, we recognize that they ultimately have the...
Do we, do we even really have to approve the transfer?
No.
I didn't think so.
Oh.
There you go.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
But I, well, maybe as a discussion with the Board of Finance. The last thing I wanna find out is that they're really relying upon us to be the...
Better.
The better, and they are the, you know, they are the...
So I think that is a good discussion to have with the Board of Finance. What is their, when you have said yes to a transfer, what is their expectation that that means?
Been vetted.
Right.
Correct, I think that's a fair conversation, and we can just kick it down the line and make some parameters about which we would ask or hope the governing commission has looked at and discussed it.
Definitely wanna make sure that they've looked at it and discussed it.
Right, right.
I would agree.
Because they know the building, they know the, for example, they know the police station much better than I.
Right. Maybe you could talk to Jen and, and have a conversation with Jen and see how she feels about that too.
Okay.
All right, any other agenda review?
No, we've got gifts coming up, grants.
I wanna know how you wanna continue proceeding with your review of the charter. I had laid out a schedule, you know, to go over a chapter and then vote later, but I don't think, I think considering the amount of effort you alls are putting into it, I think my schedule was aggressive. I think you need to take more time in discussing, so...
Maybe, Del, like, given that we're heading into the holiday season and the budget season.
Ian, do, you know, do you wanna, like, instead of my schedule, had you discussed when we vote the next meeting? Just continue the discussion and vote at the end?
Yes, I think that's what I would recommend.
Vote at the end of all the different ones.
Yeah. That gives us a nice long time to really deliberate on the things that we've been discussing. I would recommend waiting and voting at the end. Anybody else? Okay. If there's nothing else for agenda review, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. David moves, Sarah seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Krista, you asked some really good questions on the technology stuff. Really good.